Got quiet room, that means it's probably time to start our meetings. We call this meeting of Lebanon County Board of Commissioners to order Thursday, April seventeenth. We will start our meeting as a commissioner with the observance of a moment of silence, please. Thank you for joining me.
My pleasure. My pleasure. To the line, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And time on our agenda, we'll open the floor for any public comment. And I see on our agenda that Mr. Schroeder have already requested some time, but please, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Schroeder, I live in South Anvil Township. And I'm speaking today wearing my hat and T-shirt of the All Volunteer Put-It-to-Hill-a-Watersheds Association as President of the Put-It-to-Hill-a-Watershed Association. You have, you have our letter in hand sent earlier this week expressing our concerns about the proposed sale and development of the county-owned land on the city's east side. That includes six acres of wetland that form the headwaters of the Quiddity Hilla Creek. Our county's main waterway that runs straight through the city of Lebanon and through the most densely populated and commercially developed part of the county. The Lev Town article by James Mester, published ten days ago, April seventh, is the first we've heard of the prospect of selling to a developer this county-owned land that includes six acres of wetland at the Quiddity's headwaters. So thank you, James, he's not here today, and Lev Town for your reporting. As we say in our letter to you, we are greatly concerned about the environmental impact of development of this site mainly because the wetland in question forms the headwater of Quiddity Hilla Creek and acts as a giant sponge during high rain events and is crucial to the health of the Quiddity's ecosystem and for minimizing the odds of destructive flooding and property damage downstream. We are deeply concerned about the prospect of developing this parcel and creating even more impervious surfaces that will increase the chances of destructive flooding downstream. So we are asking for several things here today. Our first act is that the Watershed Association be given a seat at the table in any future discussions about the fate of this property. We want to be in on the discussions and know what's happening. Secondly, that at minimum you delay any final sale until the environmental impact of any future development can be researched and investigated and made public. Third, that in order for the county to give its final approval to any sale, the developer must submit detailed plans for the property, including its plan for stormwater management. Fourth, that the question be answered, how does the developer's plan fit into or not fit into the county's comprehensive plan? As you know, the plan is now outdated by nearly a decade and the county is in the initial stages of updating it. We cannot know whether any proposed development aligns with the county's comprehensive plan until the county actually had an updated county, uh, county-wide comprehensive plan, which we don't have now. And then finally, fifth, the Altoona-based developer in question, Bruce Taylor of BT Lebanon LLC, is also described as, quote, "a principal of BT Management Group, a company that has developed stores for sheep." So we urge you to consider the question, does Lebanon County really need another sheep? How many sheep, how many rudders can be squeezed into one county? We submit to you that we do not need yet another sheep and that any development in this environmentally sensitive and critically important parcel of land and wetlands must be done with the utmost care and foresight. Thank you.
Thank you. So I take a notes, Jamie. Those points down, thank you for your comments. Any additional comments?
Yes.
Sir, if you would, please identify yourself on the record.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to attend the meeting. My name is Rich DeStanislaw. I'm the president of the Doc Fritchy Chapter of Trotta Unlimited, which our region is Lebanon County, Dalton County. I live in Harrisburg, and I'm here because of the same concern that, that Mr. Schroeder has mentioned. And that is the sale of the land that includes the property adjacent to the headwaters, the wetlands for the Quiddity Hilla Creek. From our organization, Doc Fritchy Trotta Unlimited is a conservation organization. We have made considerable investments, both in time and in grant money and money from our own chapter in conservation developments in the Quiddity itself. And when we are concerned because any development along the headwaters will increase the flow that's going downstream. We just finished a ninety-six thousand dollar project right below Spruce Creek in which we did things to the banks and worked with the landowners to create a better flow along the stream system according to what we have. And to increase the, the flow and potential for stormwater damage by developing the headwaters is going to do unknown damage, but we have not seen any study. I would like to introduce Mr. Russ Collins, who's our Conservation Officer for our chapter. And Russ has some comments that will certainly add to what I've said. Thank you very much.
Do not mind if I don't rise.
That's okay, Mr. Collins.
Um, as, as Mr. DeStanislaw said, my name is Russ Collins. I represent the local chapter of Trotta Unlimited in Dalton, Lebanon County. As the past president and also as vice president, I think that's President of Americas right now, has been involved in for, oh, twenty, twenty years or so. Um, I al, I am also the National Leadership Council Representative for the state of Pennsylvania to National Trotta Unlimited. And as the premier conservation organization in the country. Uh, it's al, it's always been our effort to, uh, restore and repair the creeks. And we've spent significant amount of money in this, in this area. To date, we have secured close to five million dollars. And that's, my job is to go out, talk to the landowners and also start looking for their money, which in fact, we've just topped over five million dollars here, just in the Lebanon County area. We have several ongoing projects on the Quiddity Watershed and Hammer Creek Watershed near Shaverstone. Uh, that's to the tune of probably about three million right there. I'm here to express my concern as a volunteer environmentalist about the se, the sale of property in East Walnut Street. That's the proper location, this is, this property. And the proposed location of a sheep's drive-through gas station is next to an existing wetland supporting, as others have mentioned here. This type of facility adjacent to a wetland, and it's been a very big part of my work to avoid this type of encroachment on a wetland area to create potential and environmental catastrophe. As you, I would reference, if you're familiar with the, uh, facility uh, near Spangler Road and Route three twenty-two, where Beck Creek goes through there. Many decades ago, there was a leaking gasoline, releasing ethanol down into that area. And they've been working hard to remediate that area for sure. And we now have a nine, close to a million dollar project that's about ready to begin down in that area to at least mitigate and somewhat restore that area for, uh, wildlife and fishery down in that area. And so the, this is the reason why I think of this type of facility, there are wetlands at the headwaters of the Quiddity Watershed should not be permitted, that type, that particular type of, uh, facility. There is potential for pollution of that area. Again, thank you, nice to talk to you, and nice to see you again, thank you.
One additional request?
Yeah, I'm up here, Concerned Citizen, that's my old neighborhood right down there. I know when the Bethlehem Steel closed in the seventies, there were loads of money poured into requiring them to clean up their mess along the Quiddity Hilla. The headwaters are right up where he's talking about, down on Short Lane and right there where, uh, Walnut Street turns into Eighth Avenue and connects with four twenty-two going eastbound. I'm very concerned about putting in any sort of gas station or anything like that because accidents happen. And with the increased traffic and the more cars and the propensity for people to tend to throw their garbage all over the place in a place like a sheep's or rudders or any other type of gas station, I would not be in favor of such a project. We can find another use for that property besides making it into a gas station because it would be an environmental disaster potentially when many people over many years have spent a lot of money to clean up the Quiddity. And I'm sure, I don't know if anyone's here from Anvil, but I know Anvil has put a lot of money into the Quiddity Hilla Park in Anvil, and the Quiddity Hilla runs right through there. If the headwaters get dirtied up, that all washes downstream and it practically negates their effort to clean up their section of the Quiddity. And it's a nice stream, it's a big enough stream. If we persist in cleaning it up and getting some of the pollutants out of there, it could potentially be a good trout stream and then we'd have revenue coming in from the sportsman. Actually, if you think about the old DMV, and I believe that's the property we're talking about, that would be a nice place to put an East End Visitor's Center. There's a lot of good things on the East End that would attract people. We already have a hotel down there. So why not make it a visitor's center on that end of town and show them all the good things we've done with our parks and cleaning up our environment? That's all, thank you.
Thank you for the additional comments. Kind, it's just, I think I can speak on behalf of the board, appreciate your, your time and comments and, and come to share that. Uh, we, we share your concern. And I want to say also, thank you for your individuals, I know this is one too, and many other volunteers that have spent a lot of time and effort to make that creek a lot healthier than it had been. So, uh, we, we've made huge progress and we share your concern to make sure it stays that way. Thank you. So, uh, we have had just two late requests, uh, to add some items to the agenda that we need to take action on. One is regarding some network switches, and I think Matt Solister will be presenting on that. And so this time we'll entertain a motion to add that item to the agenda. Awesome.
A second, and I didn't have time to read them, I won't get it.
Motion and second, I guess, it just, you know, came before us late yesterday. Any questions? Not all in favor to add that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Close name sign, we'll add that. And, um, second item, uh, recent news of a, a board reappointment we need to do for the redevelopment authority, we can add that as well.
Make a motion to add a redevelopment authority to the agenda?
Second, question, second, questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll add that item and we'll do that. Jamie will take those down, that's part of your.
Could put there or when, or when Dan presents either one of you?
Okay, well, one of each. All right, then that brings us to, uh, the treasures of, of Millen. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Just want to make sure you were paying attention. We need to take action to approve the minutes from our meeting, uh, two weeks ago. Copy those.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? None in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and those minutes are approved, thank you. Now, we do.
Morning. Okay, we did not have deposits on the fourth, even sixteenth, but we have a cash balance. Let me check this out, okay, here. All right. Hey, we have a cash balance, she doesn't have the expenditures on here, goodness. All right, but we have a cash balance of six million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents. So, tax money's coming in though, so that's a good thing.
I'll move to approve, uh, this report as presented.
Second.
Oh, wait, here, here we go, it's on this.
As amended.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Usually has it on both these, and that's the one I usually use. But anyway, we had receipts, we did have receipts, and I couldn't figure out why we didn't, but one million, eight hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and twenty-one cents. Brought us to a total cash of eight million, three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty-one cents. Our expenditures were one million, eight hundred ninety-five dollars, six hundred sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents. The tax claim was a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents. So we're with, have a cash balance of six million, three hundred thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And that was different than the first one, yeah, so was it six million?
We used to use this other paper, and I had to get my kids on the school bus, so I didn't get in the early.
So amended, I, I amended my motion.
Okay.
Can I please have the new number? Six million, three hundred?
Eight eight one, ninety-eight.
Fifty-nine.
Ninety-eight, fifty-nine.
That's what I'm getting.
Who can just give that number from the start again, so I can.
Yeah, I'll stay quiet this time.
Six million, three hundred thousand, eight hundred, eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Thank you.
Boy, oh boy, now I'm really messed up. Okay, three million.
Not three million, six million.
Six million.
I mean, yes, six million, three hundred.
Three hundred.
It's too many talking, I'm sorry. Ally, could you say the whole number at one time, please?
Six million, three hundred, eight eight one, five nine.
Okay, three hundred thousand.
What you got?
I got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a motion and second to reflect those, those, uh, numbers as reported. Uh, any questions, comments? Were none? All in favor, please say aye, hold the same sign, thank you. Al, good morning, please introduce yourself on the record and proceed.
Morning, Michelle Snavely, Director of Human Resources. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Nathan Hauser, Maintenance Mechanic, Buildings and Grounds, Resignation Effective April twenty-first. Amber Miller, Casework Supervisor One, and Children and Youth, Termination Effective April third. Vincent D. DC, the second, Caseworker One, Children and Youth, Resignation Effective April third. Stephanie Gilbert, Caseworker One, Children and Youth, Termination Effective April fourteenth. Andrew Ruthbus, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Termination for Job Abandonment, Effective April eighth. Joseph Shawley, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Resignation Effective April twenty-fifth. Tina Zellman, Full-Time Telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services, Termination slash Removal, No Call, No Show, Effective April seventh. Yuri May, Morales Bayas, Office Support Two, Domestic Relations, Resignation Effective April seventeenth, and last working day being April sixteenth. Margaret McAtier, Office Support Two, Domestic Relations, Resignation Effective April twenty-fifth. And Lisa Wolf, Office Support Two, Probation Services, Termination Effective April fourth.
Make a motion to approve?
A second motion. Motion second, questions, comments? Not all in favor?
An observation, an observation, these ten, five terminations, five resignations, all within less than, really, two years. Uh, it's amazing, all the work that goes into hiring, the, uh, I think it reflects either the difficulty of the positions or the, the pool that we're drawing from. Uh, it's part of the equation as well, but it's, it's very, you know, all the effort that goes into try to hire and retain. But this is a common ailment, not only for us, but for others, and hopefully we'll get through this patch and see some longevity at some point.
Michelle, comments, questions? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Approved.
Under Changes to Status, Transfers and Promotions, Brittany Bennett, Change of Status from General Clerk C. and the Clerk of Courts, Casual, Part-Time Court Clerk in the Clerk of Courts, at the rate of fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents per hour, effective April twenty-eighth.
Awesome.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Change of.
Under Other Transactions, Children and Youth would like to hire Robert Heverling as Admin Assistant One, at the rate of one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents by weekly, effective April one-first. Community Action Partnership would like to hire the following two full-time MATT officers, both at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seven cents by weekly, both effective April twenty-first. And that's Kiona Coward and Will Marie Quinones. MHIDEI would like to rehire Michelle Curry as a caseworker two, at the rate of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents by weekly, effective April twenty-eighth. And President Judge Tillwak would like to hire Destiny Fennel as an office support two in probation services, at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seven cents by weekly, effective April twenty-eighth.
So moved, second.
Motion second, questions or comments? And none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Are approved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions Previously Read Plus the Following, Rebecca Watson, Salary Increase, Law Clerk with the bar, for passing the bar, to the rate of two thousand and fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents by weekly, effective April thirteenth. Andrew Morales, Salary Increase, Full-Time Telecommunicator to Telecommunicator Two, to the rate of twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents per hour, effective April thirteenth. And Heather Klein, Salary Increase, Building Code Administrator One, Planning for Passing the Building Code Administrator Certification to the Rate of one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-nine cents by weekly, effective April thirteenth.
Second.
Any second questions, comments? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Salary Board, our combinations are approved. Anything else, Michelle?
Yep.
Hi, Janelle.
Good morning.
Good morning. Would you please introduce yourself on the record and then you may proceed.
My name is Janelle Gecker, I'm the Facility Director at the Renova Center. I have requested to attend the meeting today to ask for a bed reduction of one bed for the Renova Center. We've been operating on a deficit for the past few years because we haven't been able to maintain the twenty-four-bed occupancy rate. And every year that we don't do that, the, um, our funding gets deducted, we get a hit with a fee for deduction and um, we talked to our accounting, Ask Tech, the accounting firm that we use. And, um, last year it was over sixty-nine thousand dollars that we had to pay back because we weren't able to maintain the, the, um, the bed, the bed rate that we're certified at. So I'm asking for a one-bed reduction. And we were, um, when I was talking to the accounting firm, they had said that this will help because then they can submit other information to the state and then hopefully that, that deficit will be waived. It's, it goes year to year, but it will be waived for this coming year then, to do the reduction.
I'll move to approve the reduction then. Count.
Second.
We have motion second, are any questions, comments? Can you remind me of what it was at its peak and where we are now?
Um, at the peak, it was at twenty-five. We had done a one-bed reduction a few years ago prior to COVID, um, and now I'm asking for another one. So it would, it would be two, you know, down two from what the original.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I just, uh, want to make a comment, has nothing to do with this, but just attending the past few months, a couple of funerals that, a couple of your clients and, and watching your staff come together and uh, how beautiful those services were and to see the relationship that your staff has with those, your clients is, it's like family and it's, 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 uh, very touching.
Thank you.
You guys do us well, do.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Here are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have that approval, anything else?
No, that was it, thank you.
Bless you, keep up the great work. Thank you, Janelle. Mr. Lyons.
Good morning.
Good morning, would you please identify yourself on the record and then you may proceed.
Dan Lyons, Executive Director of the Housing and Redevelopment Authorities. Have a piece of business for the county's home program. Uh, we've been working with the State Department of Community and Economic Development to begin operating the first-time homebuyer program again. And, uh, we've been submitting at their request, uh, some of the documents that were submitted originally with our application, including a, uh, management plan and a, uh, certification of capacity. And as part of that, they've also requested that we, uh, have executed an updated administrative agreement between the county and the redevelopment authority or the administration specifically of the first-time homebuyer program. Uh, the previous agreement included two fiscal years of the home program and two fiscal years of the CDVG program. So this is a standalone agreement specifically for this one fiscal year and the first-time homebuyer program.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Dan for the administrative agreement.
I will second the motion and, uh, just to note that it was reviewed by council. And any comments? Matt?
Um, no, I don't think, Dan.
Okay. All right, any questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hold the same sign and you'd have that approval.
Thank you.
If your, uh, your board reappointment at this time, you could do that.
Sure. Thank you, uh. I would like to request the reappointment of Scott Wrights to the Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors, uh, for a five-year term, going back to February ninth, uh, and forward to February ninth of twenty-thirty. Scott Wrights has served on our board since two thousand twenty-two, he was filling the remainder of a term that was vacated by a previous board member, and I've spoken with him and he is interested in, and willing to continue serving. We've got.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, and we have that approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, congratulations, you're not new to redevelopment, but you have a new title, so
uh, congratulations and, uh, and it's how we can be of the help to you. Thank you very much, I likewise, yes, sir, thank you.
Would you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yeah.
Proceed.
Good morning, Matthew Beugley, County Closer. I have three items, uh, for consideration by the board this morning. The first is a request that the county received from the LC Strong Foundation. The LC Strong Foundation is the business entity which does, uh, business as Our Lady of the Cross Catholic School on Grace Avenue. Uh, this request is related to the rollback taxes. The LC Strong Foundation purchased property directly across from Grace Avenue, uh, where their facility, where their educational facility is now. They recently purchased, uh, a new parcel of the land, and that parcel had been enrolled in the Cleaning Green Program. And so as part of the, the purchase, uh, because it's the, the property transferred, uh, there are rollback taxes which are due, uh, on the property. The, the statute, however, which governs, uh, rollback taxes and the Cleaning Green Program, does grant the Board of Commissioners and other taxing agencies, uh, discretion to, uh, abate the amount that's due and essentially forgive that amount. Uh, the amount that is due, at the total here, is, um, approximately five thousand dollars relative to the county's portion. Uh, the five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and seventy-six cents, uh, the portion relative to Lebanon Township and Cornwall, Lebanon School District would have to be approved by their boards. But the county portion, five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and seventy-six cents. The reason why there is some discretion that is given is because the transfer occurred, uh, and it was to, uh, a religious organization. And so if the board determines that it meets the criteria, and I provided the board with a memorandum, then, uh, it is fully up to the discretion of the board to forgive the five thousand. I have Ted Connolly here from my assessment office.
Oh, good, because I couldn't see him.
Yeah, if, if the board has any questions, you want me to come up?
Yeah, I would.
Sir, you have a question?
Ted, have we ever forgiven any before?
There was one similar situation about five years ago, uh, in Palmyra with Grace Point Church. Uh, they purchased a tract of land, held it for a few years, tore the buildings down and then built a church. Uh, they asked for forgiveness at that time, the board denied that request.
They denied?
You did deny that. Uh, Palmyra School District also denied North London Dairy Township, uh, granted request in that situation.
And each of us can make our own decision.
You can make your own decisions. In this case, North Lebanon voted a couple of months ago, they did vote to, uh, forgive the rollback.
I just remembered that, I thought I remembered that we turned them down, uh, not necessarily this group, but
Right.
that we turned someone down for this in the past, so we wouldn't set a precedent.
It's not an identical situation, this is.
It's not an identical situation, this is for a school, the other was for a church.
But they're both nonprofit.
Essentially similar, yeah.
Yeah.
Both religious organizations.
Maybe this is a fine distinction, maybe, maybe not, but uh, the seller and the acquirer are both not the profits in this case?
No.
So they, that, yeah, the, the seller was not, the, uh, there is a section and highlighted in the memo that uh, pertains to transfers to nonprofits. However, that section of the law contains a caveat that the property be used exclusively for rest or for recreational purposes. And so uh, in the memo that I provided to the board, even though it was cited uh, in their request, the letter from Elsie Strong cited that section of the act, I didn't think it was applicable since they didn't demonstrate that it could be used entirely for recreational purposes. I did however, think that their request um, pertaining to religious organizations was applicable, yeah.
I'll just also mention that we did receive a letter from our legislators, uh, all four of them that supported this. You know, allowing this rollback to be forgiven.
Their motion?
No, I'll move to uh, approve the request.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion. Um, but I think I may.
Quite.
Well, I like to, yeah, call him. You know, I, my heart really goes out to the, the school. But again, I don't think it's appropriate because we have turned others down, so we don't set a precedent. We have to pay our bills and it just, it transfers the burden to all the other taxpayers, some that might use that school. And um I think we did what was right before and, and I don't think we should change from that, if that makes sense.
As I said, totally within the discretion of the board's decision.
Any additional questions or comments? And all in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Uh, regretfully, aye.
So, so uh, grant that request for a two to one vote. And anything else?
I have two other additional items. Thank you.
Your turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two additional items, um, presenting on behalf of Danielle Hogg, uh, for informational, uh, technical services. Uh, the first item is a uh, a new lease agreement pertaining to our, our PCs that we use here at the county, uh, the two thousand twenty-five PC agreement which has been provided in your packet. This replaces the two thousand twenty-one lease agreement, the total amount hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars regarding the PCs which we use here, it's a four-year lease agreement. And this keeps the hardware updated, software updated, et cetera.
Yeah, funds are budgeted, this is just a rotation, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty dollar four-year agreement.
For.
Pardon?
We need what it's for. Just the amount or do you want to make it a battle whether it is?
Software and hardware? Aye.
Motion second to approve, uh, any questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye. At the same time, you have that approval.
All right, and final item that I have, uh, this is what was added, uh, amended to the agenda. This is a uh, maintenance and support renewal contract pertaining to our network switches. Uh, these are the electronic switches, uh, that connect the network sections, the different uh, sections of the network. Uh, that amount is twenty-two thousand seventeen dollars and seventeen cents.
So move. Motion, second?
Second.
Second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, you have that.
Thank you, that's all I have for the board.
Thank you.
I have uh three items. First being a resignation from the Lebanon County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Advisory Council. Uh, resignation by Jennifer Shay and this is, this will be effective immediately, she indicated she's just no longer able to attend the meetings. Um, and um would like to resign, is, is resigning, so that we will need to get a uh, uh vacancy filled for that healthcare professional category that expires in uh, two nineteen of twenty-five, sorry, so that's already not sure that's right, but anyway.
I'll make a motion to accept Jennifer's resignation.
I'll second the motion with our thanks for her service.
She was an outstanding employee and on the boards. I miss her.
Any additional questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At the same time. Resignation is accepted with regret.
I have seven requests for exemption for disabled veterans uh, from real estate taxes, they are Ryan Harris of East Hazel Street. Jonestown, Rita Gilbert, East Elm Street Lebanon. Shane Core, Harrison Drive Anvil, Susan Paddock, Hess Drive Lebanon. Brian Hauser, Horizon Boulevard Lebanon, Priscilla Oliver, South Eleventh Street Lebanon and Janay Bruton, Dogwood Drive Anvil.
I move to provide those exemptions.
Second.
Motion second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, and exemptions are granted.
Hey, there are two uh, applications for hotel tax grant funding. Numbers eight and nine for two thousand twenty-five. Uh, as indicated on the last page of your treasures report, by the way, the available balance in the hotel tax grant fund is fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. The first request is for music at Gretna. And this is uh, Gretna Music's twenty twenty-five fiftieth summer season. And they would like to use the funds for uh, out-of-county marketing. They have a total budget of their entire program of five hundred five thousand dollars. They are requesting five thousand dollars uh, in a grant toward that. And they note in their project description that seventy-eight percent of their audience is, are from locations outside of Lebanon County. Seven percent from like Sir Dawson Cumberland, four percent from Maryland Delaware DC, New York, New Jersey, Virginia and others. And then they list um, some of the uh, entertainment and the history that they have below.
Make a motion to approve the Gretna Music request of five thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, questions or comments?
Question. These forms of evidence still on the, the website that they're getting with the maximum of ten thousand dollars.
The huge old ones.
Yeah, probably would apply if we were to use it again. I do, yeah, I think they know that the number, but they're just giving an old form.
Gotcha.
Any additional questions or comments?
Good question, very good comment.
All right, hearing none, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, and that approval was given, five thousand in the uh, Gretna, our, our music at Gretna.
Uh, the second request is from the Friends of Old Anvil, or Historic Old Anvil Days. They are requesting a four thousand dollar grant on a project, total project cost of eight thousand dollars. And they go on in the description to describe the uh, the event and note in there that um, participants come from throughout Pennsylvania and surrounding states with alumni of Anvil Cleveland School District. And past residents of the town considering in a homecoming. They would like to use the funding for uh, traffic control, advertising, um, hiring of reenactors, et cetera.
Make motion to approve four thousand dollars for the Friends of Old Anvil.
I will second the motion.
Motion second, questions or comments? None, all in favor, request, please say aye.
Aye.
At the same time. Questions granted.
Everything I have, so nothing further than nervous meeting and going to electorally.
Hey, anything else for the good of the order this morning, sorry.
I'm switching hats, as president of the Friends of Old Anvil, I want to thank you for the uh, for the grant and I hope you come out on historical Anvil Day on, on Saturday, June fourteen.
You.
God must have a closet full of hats.
Anything else for the good of the order? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned and we will as you're ready. And in the board of elections.
So.
What, Michael? Mike.
Yeah, you too, sir. Okay, very good.
Yeah, Mike, I just wanted to uh, thank you for all your service, that was
Oh, thank you.
Or my green jacket, just for you.
Oh, at least you're a master's champion.
That's what I really, I thought it was. That's since uh, ten years ago. All right, we're gonna call to order the direction board movement, or um, you may proceed to introduce yourselves from the first place.
Right, Sean Drasher, Director of Elections.
Joyce Scarborough, Deputy Director of Elections. Janie Schumaker, uh, Office for you in elections.
Before we get into the meat of the agendas, any public comment? Not. Uh, we will look for approval in the minutes of our last meeting, which I've been providing.
Motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
Let's remove the second, any questions regarding the moment, the minutes? Any additions, deletions, corrections, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, so move. Now we'll go to the approval of the ballots that you have provided.
Those big five guys. But they are, uh, they're done, so it's, uh, they were shared previously, so if you like them, already roll.
And following this uh, vote, um, what's the process and the timing?
And rolling over here to the general election update, but we are currently uh, almost done logic and accuracy testing. So they've tested our central counts, we've tested our express vote, our handicap ADA machines. And they're currently doing the DS two hundreds right now while we're sitting here. Our print vendor already has the mail-in file ready to go, they already have the ballot file ready to go depending your approval. And so we are ready to go live as soon as we finish the testing. So it would be perhaps tomorrow, definitely Monday ballots in the mail.
Thank you, I'll, I'll hold off on my other questions till your general election update.
Okay.
So, uh, is there a motion to approve the ballots as have been distributed?
So move.
Second.
Also note that they have been online for uh, weeks, yes, so folks that are either running and they, you know, make sure their names are correct and all that.
Thank you for bringing that up, yeah, we, we sent it out to all municipalities, to both parties. Uh, we uh, posted it on our website and we notified all candidates that gave us contact information, uh, accurate contact information that uh, they were available and please proof. You're ready to roll?
Any questions regarding this uh, vote? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, so ordered.
Okay. All right, then that means if we are going live, then the next question is uh, when to set up the ballot drop-off point. If, we won't need it for a week at least, and that's pushing us just a few weeks out from the election at that point. So if uh, we could put it out the month, a week from Monday, that would only be three weeks out and that would uh, the ballots would begin arriving before it was out, but there wouldn't be much overlap, so I would propose a week from Monday.
And I'd like to review for the folks here, uh, the dimensions of this as compared to a drop box. This is, and, and just to give an outline of what this uh
It, it is guarded, so uh, rather than drop it, someone just being able to walk up and drop it off whenever they want, it would be limited hours, it would be guarded by someone uh, who is engaging the voter, saying you're only dropping off your own ballot.
Only one representing the office.
Yep, yep, one of our.
And I'd like to point out that a guard, um, a real guard, as opposed to a volunteer, someone who has the equipment, et cetera, and a uniform that people will respect.
So this, this
Right inside, yeah.
We need out there.
Right, so the real guard is right inside the back door.
Yeah.
And they can still see what's going on if there's trouble, but they, they just can't see the ballots.
And everything's on camera and there are, uh, there's panic button.
So that, that date would be beginning Monday?
Twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Which wasn't twice.
I'm sorry.
Monday, the twenty-eighth.
Eight through Election Day.
Hmm.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, awesome.
Second.
Now, question?
So is this not a shed then?
Yeah.
Where is the shed?
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't.
The shed's just the
Yeah, just to remind people that is the same same shed.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's changed.
My comment with a, uh, a similar to a police officer, but an authorized guard, maybe the sheriff's in charge of them. Deputy sheriff and he physically, or she physically could break up a fight, call the police and whatever needs done.
Yeah, and our, our panic button goes right in the sheriff's office.
What's in the
It does connect, our panic button does connect right in the sheriff's office.
Anything else?
Yes, Michael.
Uh, I had a question from somebody, if, if it's, if they would like to actually place their ballot directly into the box. Uh, are you able to accommodate that?
That wasn't something we ever addressed as a board and just as a matter of office policy. We did change that in the fall when we had numerous voters complaining that they didn't like the person standing between them and the box that was just four feet away. I, I have no problem with that, we, we can instruct poll workers to allow that, as long as it's one at a time, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I mean, that's kind of part of the problem with this, uh, that why we wanted it to be handled by somebody from the office so that we can be sure it's one voter, one ballot.
It would still be
I understand, but I mean, is it open the, the idea that that would be a, a weakness in the uh, in the chain? That's my only concern about that, I don't know, maybe it's overthinking it, but
I, I, I honestly wouldn't let that up to you, because I don't have strong feelings in particular, so I know we had complaints.
What you're saying, although to have somebody there that actually
Okay, I mean, they may should be uh, with closer, you know, observing that to make sure that there's one ballot, one person.
Hmm.
Yes, that's my request.
Okay, we can instruct the, the poll workers very specifically to that.
I'm totally fine.
Do you want a motion for your
Motion, do we pass the motion to roll it out on that timeframe? Okay. Uh, do you need a second motion on, I, we, we can just instruct the poll workers, I'm fine with that.
We did not vote, Joe, and we missed, did you physically vote it?
That's what I was unclear, I didn't think I actually voted on it. Motion, I think it was second and then we, yeah.
Yes, she Um, all in favor of this motion? Now, this is not the motion about the uh, individual dropping, this is going back to the
The date.
Original, yep. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so move.
Okay. All right, other than that, uh, this is the quietest election cycle for better or worse since I started here. It's a nice break for us. Everything is going as planned, the paperwork is way down, gone from about twenty-two thousand to about seven thousand, down to about seven thousand mail-in vote requests at this point, I wouldn't surprise if that creeps up to eight thousand before the election yet. Uh, but it's uh, very quiet. Uh, as far as elections go, uh, your numbers are as of to this morning, uh, sixty-nine, forty-eight people requesting mail-in ballots. And you will see if you're looking weekly at the overall election or registration numbers were down. That's not a surprise, even though we are growing because post-presidential elections, a lot of people fall off. Uh, fall off the rolls because they haven't voted multiple times and it's part of our standard database maintenance, so we did go down a bit, but that'll creep back up here and we'll probably find a level spot here in another year.
I think the most glaring change to me was in the city. With the uh, after you, you know, did your, your cleaning of the, of the list, that uh I think the numbers have tightened up there.
Yeah, the Republican and Democrat numbers are very close now.
Anything else?
Yes, I, I'd like, just like to um, recognize that there's a lot going on. We had the old Electriver voting machines a long time. And um, it was back in two thousand six, so we could have them before the twenty-ten election. But Lebanon County bought That Lebanon County bought their first electronic voting machines. And then, um. Thirteen years later, we bought the second round. And, uh, there's a lot of. Papers being filed. Um, because it said that our president wants to make us buy new ones again. We only have the ones we have for six years. The previous ones, one thirteen, and the ones before that, those electors, like I say, I don't know if we had them fifty years, but it was a long time. I didn't go back and research those, but I do have a concern. Uh, if we are mandated to set up these machines by the spring, it, it's not enough time. We had. Used the expo and let people try out the machines. We brought the vendors in here and spoke to our election workers and showed them how everything worked. It's just not enough time to do it, um. For the spring of next year, so I just want to make sure that's on everybody's radar and you can do your own research until that time. And hopefully we can. Convince, um, our president to hold off on that.
I'm missing, am I missing something here? So, because we, we went to paper ballots as well.
Right.
What changed?
We have about, uh, projected ten-year ex, minimum expected lifespan on the machines and we're about six years in. And some of the machines have been tossed around now by movers and poll workers, so they are starting to have to be, need maintenance and that's all normal. So we were, I was already, uh, looking at about two years from now, starting to look at bids, see if, you know, talk about a budget in three years.
Okay, but, but she's talking about the president.
Right.
It's, I, I've, I've not heard that.
So the, there was some exact, there was a large-scale, all encompassing executive order covering elections. It's not clear what applies to us. Much of what was in the executive order is stuff we already do, but there was one area that is a bit ambiguous in its language where you can't use barcodes. And anything in the election equipment and our ADA machines do use barcode. They also list out all the candidates. So it's not clear how the executive order would apply to that or the timeframe or, but there are groups out there actively on both sides. Taking action, legal action behind the scenes. I'm not sure how, if that would actually apply to the spring of next year. It probably isn't a bad idea to look at, like I didn't know the exact dates that Joel and looked up, so that was helpful, uh, but. There is a chance that a court could force us to move sooner that on our timeframe to move up when we would replace the machines. And then it probably, if they would do that, it wouldn't necessitate all of us replacing all of our systems. From what I read in the law, it would be that one individual piece of equipment, oh, we have a hundred and fifty of them, but it would be one piece of equipment that uses barcodes.
But I guess my distinction is that, that, that would be federal election related?
Yes.
So, I mean, our, our legislature and our governor would have something to say about this.
Oh, yeah, there, it's gonna be fun, yeah. Yeah, it, it, I was gonna mention before we close, there's two things that the executive order that doesn't, it, it's some stuff in there that could be applied, but probably won't affect us. Probably, uh, anytime soon and the Saves Act, uh, has some things there, the big thing being voter ID. But most of the stuff in the Save Act does not look like it's going to be impacting us, definitely this year. Maybe long-term and by the time it gets through the courts. Who knows if it will ever even impact us. Right now, business as usual in Lebanon County for the, the receivable future, that's bottom line.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else to come before this, uh, board?
It just.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to be clear that the ballots will be mailed out when?
Uh, we, we should have them in the mail by Monday or Tuesday, like actually in the mail, maybe even get a jump on that. Don't overpromise.
Thanks.
Anything else going once? Now, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
They will stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and your input.